He's ready.
Lights on.
There we go. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Newton Board of Selectmen meeting dated Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, just after 6:00 PM. If we could open this meeting with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's play ball.
I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. So we're going to be on scheduled business. And I would like to, we have a representative, Mr. Scott Bogle. It's going to do a presentation for us on age-friendly communities. Please feel free.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As you just said, my name is Scott Bogle. I'm a senior transportation planner with Rockhamm Planning Commission, and I appreciate the time on your agenda tonight to talk with you briefly about a project that the Planning Commission has been working on for about a year and a half now with funding from the, what used to be the Tufts Health Plan Foundation, now called the Point 32 Health Foundation. But it is a project to help communities in our region plan for a rapidly growing senior population. So, next slide, if I may. So, as I noted, this is something that we've had, we've gotten funding for from the Tufts Health Plan Foundation, as well as AARP New Hampshire. Our fiscal agent, the grantee on this actually, is the Rockingham Nutrition Meals on Wheels program, because Tufts will only fund 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations, not public agencies. But we've been working closely with Meals on Wheels on this. This follows a national framework developed by AARP. And actually, I should step back for a minute and just speak to this term, "age-friendly communities." This is a phrase that AARP coined to describe communities that allow residents to thrive at every age and every stage of life. But our work is building on prior work on age-friendly communities that's been done elsewhere in the state over the last several years, in the greater Manchester area by the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, out in the Keene area by Southwest Regional Planning Commission, Strafford Regional Planning Commission to the north of us, has also gotten a grant from Tufts. And also up in the Mount Washington Valley, Senior Center up there, known as the Gibson Center, got funding directly from AARP to do this. Portsmouth and Exeter have also done some of this assessment work over the last couple of years. Next slide. So, I said this draws on a framework developed by AARP. And AARP has essentially defined eight kind of dimensions of age-friendly communities. And these include the eight that you see up here. So, just running through these briefly, outdoor spaces and buildings, since the 1990s, most communities, most community facilities are accessible now with the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act, but oftentimes, that may not be the case, say, for parks or outdoor facilities. And so, looking at community facilities and the extent to which they're accessible to all residents as part of this. Transportation. A number of years ago, the state developed a state plan on aging, and one of the key recommendations in that plan is to try and support residents aging in place, being able to continue to live in their own home, which is something that surveys nationally, surveys in New Hampshire have found the overwhelming majority of folks want to be able to do as they age. A key factor there, though, is, once you stop driving, do you have options that will allow you to get to your doctor's appointments, to get out grocery shopping, to just meet other basic life needs? Housing options, thinking about this as well, say, an older couple whose kids have grown up, left the nest, might have a three-bedroom house, and they no longer want to manage the, that much house, that much yard. And so, thinking about, are there options for them to shift to a smaller-sized unit, whether that's an apartment, whether that's in a 55-plus community, or just a smaller single-family home? Social participation is certainly a big part of this. Being able to have social contact is important to mental health, and ultimately, it's important to physical health. Respect and social inclusion is part of this, just thinking about whether the town is welcoming to any resident, no matter where they're from. Work and civic engagement is part of this. Are there opportunities for older adults to volunteer in schools, reading with kids, or volunteer with other organizations in town, or continue to work if they would like to do that? Communication and information. When I first saw this list of dimensions, I thought, okay, communication and information. But with the first six communities that we worked with last year, information flow really came out as a major factor in each of those towns. And older residents just feeling that they weren't necessarily aware of what was available to them in town. And then finally, health and nutrition services. Next slide, please. So, the reason that the Rockhamm Planning Commission is involved with this, I'm sure you've seen, you've all seen some variation of this graph. We have a rapidly growing aging population in New Hampshire. Part of that is just the aging of the baby boom generation. Part of that is that many communities in New Hampshire have built a good deal of age-restricted housing, and so there's an inflow of older adults as well coming in. But we're looking at almost a doubling of the population over age 65 between 2015 and 2040. Next slide. From my standpoint as a transportation planner, how this becomes really critical is that AARP estimates that about 1 in 5 Americans over age 65 doesn't drive. So, thinking about what options are going to be available to older residents when they stop driving. And I can tell you that from the surveys we did in the first six communities last year, far and away, the greatest concern that came out in the surveys, out of a list of potential concerns about aging in place in your community, that respondents were asked, "How will I get where I need to go when I stop driving?" was the top concern. But that 1 in 5, folks over age 65 not driving, that equates to about 75,000 non-driving older adults in New Hampshire by 2030. These are based on national averages. We think that in New Hampshire, that percent is probably a little bit lower, maybe not as many as 1 in 5. But we're actually working with the State Commission on Aging currently to try to get funding for a statewide needs assessment, to figure out just what that number is for New Hampshire. Next slide, please. So, the scope of the grant as a whole is that we're working with a number of communities to develop these community needs assessments, these age-friendly community assessments. In the first year, last year, we worked with six towns that you see up there. In the second year of the project, we have funding to work with a couple more communities on assessments. And then, we're also working with two towns that participated last year, working with them on implementation projects. So, based on the needs assessments they did last year, they've identified projects that they'd like to work on. So, we're working with Fremont on developing a volunteer driver program. We're working with Stratum on trying to come up with a better system for ensuring that all of their older residents are getting information about programs and services available in town. And then, at the end of year two, we'll hold a regional forum just to share results from all of the community assessments. So, next slide, please. So, the community assessments, each of these is guided by a local steering committee. It involves a community survey. And then, we share the results of that community survey at a community forum, and at that community forum, look to get additional input from residents on what they see as needs in the community, or opportunities, ideas for how, whether it's the town or nonprofit organizations in the, in the community or region can better serve older residents. And then, taking information from the survey, from the forum, and input that we get from steering committee members, we'll write up an assessment report for the town and present that back to the select board, with the idea being that that's information that you can do with what you please, but can potentially be used for making adjustments to programs and services for older residents, for future updates to local master plan. Next slide. So, the local steering committees, the role of the local steering committee really is to guide the assessment process. Ideally, we want these to include a mix of town staff and residents. Town staff that are involved with programs or services for older residents. Oftentimes, that might be a recreation director, or members of the recreation committee, a librarian, a town planner, where those exist. Emergency services personnel. A member of the select board is often a great thing to have on these. A main role of the steering committee is generating local engagement in the survey and in the forum, to make sure that we're getting input from a broad swath of the community, and then certainly contributing their own knowledge of town to the assessment report. We would have the committee meet four times. Once to go over the draft survey and plan for survey distribution, once to go over the survey results and plan for the community forum, once to take a look at the draft report, give us feedback and edits, and then once to review the final report, after which, we'd bring it back to the select board. Next slide. At the regional level, we have a regional steering committee that's been guiding this. Core to that is representatives from each of the participating towns. And on those municipal staff and elected officials, we've tried to get a range of different roles from different communities. We have a select board member, we have a senior services director in Portsmouth, we have a town planner, a recreation director, a town administrator, a library director, actually, two library directors now. And then, also have staff from various organizations that are involved with those eight dimensions of age-friendly communities that AARP has defined. And next slide. So, that's the quick summary of the program. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about it, but I'm interested to find out if you think this is something that would be of interest to Newton. There's no cost to the community for this.
So, if we were interested, what would our next step be?
The next step would be that, I think we'd be looking for a motion from the select board to endorse the town participating. And then, I gather that I would work with Jim Doggett on putting together a local steering committee.
So, this is just to dumb it down a lot. You guys are going to come in, run a survey, say the survey comes up with transportation is their biggest problem in Newton. You would then try to come up with a plan, whether it be volunteer, get a van donated, something to that effect, and like, follow it through all the way? Or is it?
The reality is that we have, we have funding just for the assessment report, so we would write up the results of the assessment. You know, every member of the Rockhamm Planning Commission gets a certain amount of technical assistance time, and so, we can provide some amount of technical assistance to the town in trying to help the town follow up on what the survey.
Needs that are identified here.
Sure. But we don't have a big chunk of time to do that.
So, this is more or less to get an idea of what the aging community needs, their biggest need at this time?
Yeah, needs and desires, essentially gathering information from local residents that the town can use for its own purposes.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think my biggest thing is, I see the value in this, in the press tag is right, at least at this point.
I agree, and it'd be great information for us to have.
And then, we decide at that point, you know.
How to act.
How to act, yeah.
You're not going to try to work on a discount?
If I wait long enough, I might be able to get a discount.
Well, one of us won't have a license, so, 1 in 5.
That's true.
Somebody at this table.
So, is somebody making a motion?
Yeah, I would, and this is when I turn to Diane and I say, "Sorry." So, we got to break Robin in my motions that go all over the place, but... So, I would, I would move to endorse Newton's involvement in the age-friendly communities study that is being conducted by the Rockhamm Planning Commission. Period? That work?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Guy? All set?
Jim might have a comment.
Seconded was by Mr. Guy, yeah? For discussion, yeah.
Open for discussion?
And it looks like Jim's got a comment.
Glad to hear that the board is actually considering this, because not only does it have...
You speak into the mic, please.
Not only does it have an impact on the people that are aging in town, I happen to be one of them, but from the product of this, we may be looking at possible additional things for the CIP, and additional information that can be used in the next iteration or iterations of the master plan.
I caught that.
It's, you know, as much information as we can get, I've already been sending out feelers to those people that I thought in town might consider.
Subcommittee?
Being on the subcommittee. However, until you guys say yes, I'm not going to start twisting any arms.
Sure. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Anybody on TV? I don't see any hands up.
Nope.
We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that would be unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
For your time.
Have a good night.
All right, with that being said, we're going to open the floor for public comments from the public, if anybody has anything to share with the select board.
So, we probably should, for those who didn't see our last episode, we decided to add this at the top of the meeting, designed for, for really, for the most part, for people who have public comments regarding agenda items, you know, so they can get them out. So, I think our plan is to have this on the agenda for each meeting like this. So, maybe we don't get a lot of interest here tonight, but maybe in future meetings.
Yep. So, there being none. And like Matt said, hopefully, the whole idea, like Matt said, is we're trying to get more people involved from the community to interact with the town hall, the select board, and all the other department heads, so that we can get a, just like Mr. Bogle was talking about, so we can get some good ideas about where everybody's at, and maybe where we're falling short in dealing with some of the issues from the town, when we do deal with them on the agendas. All right. So, Trish, if you would please give us our update.
Thank you, thank you, welcome. Okay, this is our ARPA update and the EOC update. So, since our last meeting, if you remember, I mentioned the AEDs. They're being dispersed accordingly to the various places where they were taken from. We also had to buy new cases. The ARPA committee did approve buying the new cases, and, you know, once we actually get an invoice, we'll forward it to you. We actually approved spending up to $1,000, but after talking to Deputy Kane, he said they're probably only going to run us 150 apiece, so it will be considerably less than that. We only need four. Town hall, police department, fire department, and transfer station. Camera installation, you know, we've been working on that for a while, we're still waiting for consolidated? Yes, consolidated. So, we're working on that. The construction trailer for the transfer station, we're still working on that. We've got some decent prices on that, including some potential free ones, so free is always good. We'll keep you posted on that. The rescue boat, the chief did go there last week to take a look at the boat. There's a couple more things we need, and we're probably looking at, I don't know, maybe three more weeks, chief? Something like that? Few more weeks. The repeater was installed, finally, and now it's currently being tested by police, fire, and the EOC. We're trying to confirm signal strength. We've got some areas that are still very bad, so we're going to have to address it, but we are working on it. You also had a requisition in front of you. Should I? I'll wait till we have to approve it, and then I have a requisition I'll talk about, I just need to explain it. So, that's the ARPA. As you know, I'm supposed to be very transparent with ARPA. The EOC is a kind of a quick report. Actually, today, I did, I wrote another EOC grant for $25,77.60. This money came from the message board sign. I can only get paid for this sign till May 11th after that, so I'm taking advantage of this money. This is the money that we can use to operate the EOC during emergencies, whether it's state, local, or federal, and it can be used for payroll, equipment, supplies. For instance, I have a printer that we never had before, and I don't have a line item to buy ink. If we had money in this account, I could actually buy ink and paper. That's how it would work. The treasurer has set up the account. She's closed out that account, the trust fund, along with the help from the trustees, and reopened the revolving account that was approved by the residents on March 14th. So, a check has been deposited into that right now, roughly like $8,600, something like that. But the rest of the signed money will have to be put into that, so I'm going to be working on that with the new bookkeeper. COVID, it's not gone away. We still have kits, if you need kits. Know that vaccines, boosters are all free until May 11th, and after that, anyone that needs them, you're going to have to pay for them. The other thing is, we now have a whole slew of new people with us. Welcome, welcome. So, because we write grants, any responders that assist during our emergency, whether it's a Seabrook emergency or a local emergency, we need to get people certified by NIMS, which is National Incident Management System. I'll send a link to all the newbies that we have in town. A lot of the people that are now gone were all certified. I need to make sure that there's a certain percentage of staff in town that is certified, otherwise, it affects us getting a federal grant. And there's really only two classes they want, they have a whole slew of them, but they want IS-100 and IS-700, particularly for new people to get going. So, I'll send that to you. If I had 18 people, they would actually come in person and do the class, otherwise, we're going to have to do it online. So, I'm going to send emails out to all the newbies that we have around here. As far as the residents go, you need to know, again, there is something called the Hampshire Homeowner Assistant Fund Program, and it provides assistance to homeowners who've been affected in a way, whether it's an increase in expenses or a reduction in income as a result of COVID. And if so, if you find yourself in that category, and you're behind in paying mortgage payments, property charges, utility payments, real estate taxes, you actually can go online and see if you qualify, and you can get assistance. I recommend you do this before May 11th. The website that you would go to is homehelpnh.org, and there's a lot of people that could probably take advantage of it. And I think that's it.
Trish, before you go, you do a lot of that ARPA stuff.
Yes.
Do you have a punch list of everything that you've done?
Oh, yes.
Could you send us that?
You should see our notebooks, yep. There's actually a spreadsheet.
Is it computerized? I looked for it real quick, and if I can't find it, that's fine, but I was just interested to see the list.
Yep. And the spreadsheet has not only our expenses, but kind of a wish list, things that we, I don't want to say we've committed, but we've really vetted and thoroughly discussed as potential, like, for instance, the Grady Pot Playground is on the list. We know that something is going to happen there. We've got some money held out for that.
Sure.
For when that could happen. And then, we've got some things that we've looked at and just completely didn't make any sense. So, yes, I can send that.
Thank you.
We should, we should think about making that part of our artifacts every meeting, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Whatever it looks like, you know, it's a picture in time, right?
It is.
It changes, but whatever you, whatever you have before the next meeting, we can put it in our folder.
Yes. And when I do, when we do have updates or expenses that have been approved by you, and then we finally paid, I update that spreadsheet, and then I'll send, I send it to you. So, you will get that.
Okay.
And I would just like to reiterate, May 11th, people of this year, the federal government will be looking to shut down a lot of these grants and monies that they are putting out there to help people out, and they're going to withdraw all of those, and they're going to shut down. So, if you really could benefit from some of these, I would really suggest that you look into them, the sooner the better, like Tricia talked about.
Right. There'll still be some of the state grants, the governor's office, the Gopher Grants, if you remember, we did many of those. Those will still be available, and there's bits and pieces, there's grants I'm working on with, actually, the police department, the fire department, and the road agent right now, that will not go away. So, there's some that aren't attributed to the American Recovery Plan Act. So, there is money out there, but we've been very fortunate where we are in the last, I guess it's three years now, in getting this money and being able to restore deficits in different departments for certain things they never would have been able to get. So, we're really lucky. Thank you for that.
And we appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
The courses that you're looking at?
Yes.
Just curious, are they all-day courses, half-day courses?
They're usually about three or four hours, and you can break, well, the online ones, you don't have to do them all at once, you can go back to it. And a lot of them, although they have changed over the years and maybe upgraded, a lot of them, I have actually three-ring binders that I took the time to create, so actually, you can flip through it, and it might help you while you're actually looking at the thing online.
Okay.
So, I can share that stuff with you guys.
Thank you.
And ladies. Okay? And the requisition?
Do you have specific people in mind that you want to take this course, certified?
So, it's funny, the feds, Homeland Security wanted originally, a majority of every committee sitting in a town. They have since realized it's not realistic. There was a time when the majority of the selectmen were all certified. The town administrator was certified, the board of selectmen secretary, the bookkeeper had to be certified. Now, they've narrowed it down, not narrowed, they've broadened it, and they're way more lax. Are they going to come in and slap my hand because we only have, I think, probably one? I think you're the only one, right? Joe was taking, getting ready to take some. So, they're not going to slap our hand. The bookkeeper is somebody that will have to take the time to do it, and someday, when we have somebody, we're going to keep him, aren't we?
He doesn't know it yet.
He doesn't know yet? Okay. Scratch that, everybody. Okay. So, yes, I'll send a recommended list, and again, and I talked to Homeland Security today about this. There is nothing, heaven forbid they write something down, this is the government after all, you know? So, why make it easy? So, it's very broad, and I can give you suggestions. And all police and fire have to be certified. They respond to these events, so they are, the chief takes care of it, and so does Chief Jewitt. The road agent is certified, Ronnie is certified. So, I'm kind of covered with actual first responders, which is a requirement, but some of you, you know, you're going to probably be on the Seabrook now that you're selectmen, you know, you're probably part of the Seabrook drills, and you should take the time to get certified.
Okay. Send out the link to us, so...
Yeah, it doesn't take long. Yeah, it doesn't take long.
Oh, hello. Yes, I didn't know you were here, sorry. Yes. And someone, I'm sorry, did someone say something?
I said, make sure you send out the link.
Yes, I absolutely will.
Okay.
Okay. Should I say that? Are we going to talk about the requisition or not now?
Not now.
Not now.
Thank you, Trish. Next, we're going to have a discussion on the unused town vehicles. So this came up, we were thinking about maybe taking a look at what we had for unused town vehicles that were, we purchased through the program from, through the state or federal, and some of them are the Hummers that we have in town to which we use in the parades, but they're also set aside for emergency respond vehicles, depending, it could be floods, it could be like that disaster that we had at Christmas time, because they're rigged up with the extra, the extra lightings to be able to light up the roadways so that they could be able to see to clear them, or snow emergencies, or various emergencies that might arise. Fortunately, we haven't had that many of them. We really haven't been using too many of them. I talked with the road agent about them, and the program no longer exists. So if we were to sell these, the likelihood of the town being able to get any other emergency equipment like this, I would have to say, from what I would realistically look at it, would be nil to none. So, but we do have some generators that were supposed to be hooked up to in, how do I, I want to say this to be politically correct, a housing unit where people were around oxygen and whatever, that if the power went out, it could be very detrimental to their health. However, the people that own those units didn't want to invest in the panel to be able to shut it down so that we could hook those up to it. So right now, those are sitting around not doing anything, and that's recommended, that we could afford to lose those, maybe sell those, bring in some revenue with that, put it into the kitty, because part of it is, we're looking at the default budget that we're operating, and hopefully, we were trying to, trying to think outside the box and get some money to put into that so that we would have some extra money to operate with, and that was the whole gist of this whole, this whole thing. So I don't know if you gentlemen have anything else you want to say about it or talk about it.
So, so I would say, has anybody, one, those department heads that these are associated with, I'd like to hear their opinions, but then, number two, what's the assessed value? Are we talking pennies on a dollar? Are we talking substantial dollars that can go back into the fund, into the kitty?
They're older vehicles, so I would, you know, be in a
Do we have a list?
In the business of driving trucks, we have, there's five Hummers. But they're all, yeah, they're all old.
An inventory of what we're talking about.
Yeah.
I'd like that.
I'd like an inventory and then estimated values, sold values.
Crown Vic in that as well?
The likely won't be a lot of money we'd get back for that, but we did this a few years ago, right? I'm looking at Lisa and Jim, and kind of cast a wide net to all the department heads and say, do you have any thoughts? And we came up with that inventory, and I think we made, we made a little bit. I mean, this isn't, let's say something we all know, this isn't going to solve our problems, but it's, I think every little bit helps, right? It might, might be able to help, but we are in week, you know, three, let's call it week three, week four
Four.
Of a town emergency. And the town emergency is that we're in a default budget, and we're going to be in this default budget for a while. So this is a good move because it's, it's the whole tightening your belt stuff, but it's not going to solve a problem.
I'd like to hear from the department heads and who's responsible for these vehicles to see exactly, you know, what their needs are before we move on.
The other flip to the side of that coin is, what are we going to save, like, for vehicles, insurance? Is there a savings as well that goes with
Registrations.
Registrations, insurance, right? That kind of stuff. Let's take a full 360 view of what the whole nut is.
And the townwide yard sale day is May 22nd, Joe, is that what it is?
About a month and a half.
If we put it out here, it might be okay.
Jimmy, you had something to say?
Just wanted to remind you to be very careful and double-check where, where vehicles came from, because some of the ones, when the town is done with, according to the paperwork, are supposed to be returned.
Fair enough.
And I would not want the town to suddenly find out that they got rid of a vehicle that they had to return to the National Guard or what have you, and instead, okay, here's a bill.
Yep. We don't want to defeat.
Do we know where such paperwork exists?
The, so the, we're talking about, what was the, the program called? It was a number. It was like the Federal 395, or, you know what I'm talking about. So the road agent was our conduit into that program, so that'd be a question for him.
Yeah, and Mike said that program no longer exists at this point.
Yeah, but we might still have the requirement, so.
Right.
I'll have to look into it.
I asked Mike about that, and he said, none of the vehicles or equipment have that caveat.
Oh, good.
All right, so I guess we need a list.
Yep. So we'll send a letter out to the department heads, and we'll get an inventory of all of that. Please, Robin?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hey, it's 2023, I think we're going to send an email.
Email. Same difference.
No, let the pigeons go.
That's, that's what I mean when I say that.
I know.
We'll move on. Discussion regarding the Harris Trust. We got a letter to the bank.
I think I could probably speak on that. I was trying to look for some old trustee files the other day, and our sort of box over said trustee of trust funds, and I went in there, and needless to say, there weren't any trustee funds in there, but there was a whole bunch of fund, a whole bunch of correspondence, Harris Trust Fund. So I started asking questions, what's the Harris Trust Fund? And people seem to have heard about it, and our ex-town administrator Nancy is the one who told us that it's managed by an investment company, and we have to write to them if we want to use it. It's a Worthy Poor account for Worthy Poor. We have to write to them and see if, if the need is there, then they will disburse the money. But when I looked at the last statement, I mean, it looked as though we had like $6,000 in that fund of accumulated money to fund, to sell, that we could do something with. So with that all said and done, I spoke to, we'll get an echo. Am I doing something wrong here?
No.
I think he just turned you up.
Oh. Okay, with that all said and done, Robin and Diane contacted the folks and drafted a letter, so then we can ask, we'll be able to have permissions to ask some questions and see exactly what the fund is set up for and what the stipulations are, if we need to use it in the future.
So in the letter, simply is putting Robin's name as the executive assistant, Jim Omara, interim town administrator, and Joseph Simone Selectman on there for the correspondence, so that it's updated and it reflects that.
So I would, I would move to sign that letter authorizing staff to send and receive correspondence regarding the Harris Trust Fund, held at BMO Bank.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Conley. Any discussion?
We've already had it.
Well, I don't know if anybody from the floor wants to talk, Joe. Nobody on TV? There being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that would be unanimous. Thank you very much. Department head monthly meeting with board.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if it would be helpful if, once a quarter, we invite the department heads in, and they can give you a state of their department, if you will. It's good information for you to have, it's, it's great for the community to know what a good job our department heads and employees are doing, and you are the only vehicle via this meeting that we can convey that information to the community. So I thought we could work out a schedule with the department heads, and they're coming into a very brief presentation, if you're interested.
Yeah.
Very much so, because we're only as good as the information that we have on hand to be able to operate.
I think my, my only requirement, though, would be that we have some sort of artifact created for that, you know what I mean? So it's not, it's not just a conversation, it's some slides or something, you know, if the department has metrics that they, they use, maybe we see the metrics, you know, call volume and stuff like that.
Yep. Will do.
Yeah, something, substance.
Yeah, I think that's important. And I'm looking at the fire chief. I think it's important for people to understand what he's up against. The police chief isn't here, but as this community grows, their calls are going up, and the different, difficult calls are coming in, too. So I think it's important for this community, especially when they go to vote the next time on the budget, to understand what, what several of these department heads are up against, so I very much appreciate that.
Yeah, not only that, but just aware of everything that is going on in town, because I know a lot of people, again, it's, it's all about information, not only for us, but like Mike said, the, the town residents being able to tune in and hear exactly what is taking place in their town, so that they're, because they're not going to see it all in a newspaper, they won't see it all in the news, but what better way to learn about what's actually taking place in your town than the people who are in charge and taking care of it?
So this is a great idea. I'm going to look to our techie guru people over here. The, the good thing about what you're saying is that everybody here is going to see it. One, two, three, four, five, okay? Nine of us are going to know about this. When we put it up on the screen, people in TV land can't see it. If there would be a way, say, once a quarter with these reports, especially from police calls, fire calls, EOC probably, unless we have an emergency, nothing's going to be going on, that we create maybe a link on the webpage so that people in TV land could see the graph of the calls or the, whatever it might be, because we all know, and we've been here for how many years, it's always the same old, same old, but if we can get the word out, especially in a default budget, to expose the citizens to what we're up against and what we're doing, I think that would be great to have it on the web somewhere.
Is, I'm going to look to our friends to my right. Is there a way?
Don't hide, Diane.
Don't hide, Diane, I see you.
She's doing that fade away.
She's not leaving either.
When the presentation is being put up, I know with Teams and other, that you can share those presentations. Is there a way to share that to the public on Zoom?
We just did, right? That's what you're talking about, sharing what the
Excepting the people in TV land typically can't see that screen.
Oh, you're talking about the ones in, um
Yes, so
Watching the cable station.
Yeah, so Zoom is great, but you're right, it's the people that aren't here that are watching public television or watching YouTube.
Oh, so public, oh, that's right, because public can't see it, because it's
They can't see it, no.
There's my disconnect. Thank you very much.
There you go, yep.
So, but there, I think the functionality exists, it's just we've never really used it, right?
I think we got, that, that could be for our backroom friends.
Yes, I'm thinking that when he displays it on the Channel 20, that would get displayed.
Okay.
It will be displayed, so they should be able to see it, tell it's playing through.
Okay. I, I do want to capture that because also, when it's recorded, everybody's like, well, I didn't see it live when I got questions, it's because they went back and saw it on YouTube or the post. So we could capture that, so we have one repository.
Whenever shit goes on on Channel 20, Comcast, Channel 20 gets recorded. Oh, you know what? I don't have a microphone. Sorry about that, people. Okay.
Okay.
One second, Jim.
So just basically, so if it's, there is a way to capture it on Comcast Channel 20 that will be seen by everybody at the same time?
Okay.
And if that doesn't work, yes, we can create, download, upload the file to the website, and people can click on a link.
Thank you, Diane.
Another possibility would be, depending upon the format you choose to use, I noticed Trish was up here this evening, she had her notes and what have you. If you could capture those from the different department heads and assemble them into a single document that would be available on the web, then people would be able to read it, because not everybody has access to the internet.
Diane?
I should just learn to keep my mouth shut. So I have a question about these monthly meetings or quarterly meetings. So right now, you have some department heads doing monthly updates to you. Should they just maybe take those updates and incorporate them in their quarterly report? Otherwise, you're going to have them doing reports upon reports.
Consolidate them. My suggestion, I'll let the board speak, do, if you're doing this on a monthly basis, consolidate, give a high-level overview, and then if, if there's questions, drill, be able to drill down on that, is my thinking.
It's the same information, right? It's like, it's, they don't have to do twice the work, it's just the same.
Not recreating the wheel.
Yeah, essentially, just come in here so that the public will hear it, not just us. Anything else?
No.
All right, well, thank you. Discussion on code enforcement. Jim, would you like to say something on?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we are receiving complaints. I've only been here a short time, but last week was a pretty long week when it came to complaints. We actually met with a resident who was concerned about, and the total disregard these property owners are having for the ordinances regarding registered vehicles and, quite frankly, junkyards. As Selectman Burrell indicated, this is a live-free, die-state, where you tread lightly when we want to tell people how to use their own property, but at the same time, we do have a safety concern, more than one vehicle on the property, oil, gasoline leaking, we're all on well-watering this town. It can be an environmental concern as well as, I didn't want to say this, but there's someone there knows that, it's just, quite frankly, and it, it needs to stop. Sam Zanini, the deputy building inspector, has stepped up, and he is starting to do some, I guess, reconnaissance work, because you can't really get on property that you're not invited to, so you can't do a full assessment, but there are other ways to determine whether or not the vehicles are registered, and perhaps even find out if they're inspected, because those are the two criteria, and that's going to be the starting point for us. We also have an issue with home businesses, people, again, ignoring that statute, I believe. Mr. Chairman, you said they could have one vehicle associated?
An insured vehicle.
Unregistered.
Unregistered vehicle
Okay.
On their property.
So I wanted to give you a heads up, in case you're hearing something in the community. We're going to formulate a plan, and when it's ready to be rolled out, we'll bring it to you first and take comments and input.
The only thing I wanted to jump off of there is when you use the word reconnaissance, we don't have aircraft or drones or anything like that, you know, quite frankly, you can see all this stuff from the street.
Yep.
Like, we, we all, everyone in this room knows what I'm talking about. You drive by these houses, you can see it from the street. If you're in a butter, you can see it from your yard. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about anything more than that, so.
If I could just expand on that, it's not uncommon for somebody to collect a few cars and not register them, because they're shining them all the time and buffing them and cleaning them, and they just like to look at them, they occasionally take them out on the road. We're not looking to bother those people at all. That's someone, you know, with a hobby, but we're talking about the blatant offenders of the ordinances of this community.
Yeah, and again, like Jim said, the, the issue was these, these cars sitting there and, and rusting out the fuel tanks and the oil, and some people might say, well, it will affect my, just my well, but having But having worked in the hazardous waste field, I know for a fact that those do not just leach straight down. They leach outward. And once it gets into groundwater, that groundwater travels and that water could affect many, many a house. We did, there was a place right over in Plastow where a gentleman was doing a, started a business going around other businesses collecting their oil. And he found it cheaper to start just dumping the oil on his own property, right into the soil. Millions of dollars for that cleanup. And the company that I now work for was bringing chemicals over there to help to dilute the toxins that were released down into that ground. So that's another FYI. If the environmental people end up having to come in and come down and start doing sample, soil sampling, instead of just getting rid of these cars, what could happen was, and I would hate to see that, that somebody would end up losing their property because they couldn't afford the cost of that cleanup.
Yep.
It would become surmountable. It is, we're not, like I said, we're not doing this to try to be mean or anything like that, but we have the hole as a community that we have to worry about here. And so this problem that's issuing is we have one person that might start it and another person tends to say, well, if he's doing it, I can do it. And then another person says, well, if he's doing it, I can do it. And that's where we're at now. So now it's happening and there's too much of it going on. And we have to rein this all in. And that's why we have the code enforcement officer looking into all of this.
So I think you're saying as a friendly reminder to the community.
So this is exactly what it is, a friendly reminder to police yourselves.
Just so that you know, I'm actually trying to mimic Joe walking up, you know, always interrupting you. No.
I was saying, it looks familiar to me.
No, I have to go like this.
There you go.
Just so that you know, and it's interesting that you're talking about this, Conservation did three sidewalks last week. Two of the three were issues with unregistered mucho kind of vehicles, everything you can imagine, beside or on top of wetlands or culverts. So a letter has gone out. I think that the building department, somebody is checking their emails. I sent them a copy of it. I can keep, Jim, if you also want a copy of the letters, I don't know. Some of them are so bad DES may get involved. As somebody already said, I think, Jim, blatant disregard, you know, they don't care. So we have some horrendous groundwater issues because of the petroleum products that are actually parked on top of the wetlands. So we are working on it. We had three sidewalks last week. I got one more complaint today. So Conservation has a meeting next week, but I'll keep everybody up to date.
Thank you. Thank you, Trish. So that was just to let everybody know what's going on. And like we said, it's an FYI, so please police yourself. The sooner that the residents address it themselves, the better off we'll all be. Update on New Hampshire Investment.
Okay, so that's mine. So last meeting, there was some information that was put out there that's incorrect. You are not, the town is not getting a lump sum. Therefore, you do not need a public hearing on the 18th. The other thing I wanted to clarify is Jennifer Rowden works for RPC. She does not have her own company. So what will happen is Jennifer will send an invoice to the planning board and Jim will add his time to it. They will send it to this other HP, not HP, sorry, New Hampshire Invest. New Hampshire Invest will pay us that invoice. Then the treasurer will cut another check to go to RPC. So that's just the update on that. Did I miss anything?
So everybody's getting involved.
Yes, but I just wanted you to understand it's not a lump sum. No public hearing on the 18th.
Yeah, that was what I had brought up because they kept changing how they wanted to do it. Excuse me, Jim.
In the infamous words of government, wheels running slowly and often backwards. They've come up with three different payment methods since we got the $40,000. One additional step is that when I get the bills and add my time, it will have to be manifested through the planning board. It then goes to Invest New Hampshire. They send the check down. Treasurer cuts the checks. I do the disbursement. We still have to figure out how my salary, which is going to be like an hour per month, is going to work into that and how that gets reimbursed to the town. It's a great process that it is paying for. It's just the state changed its mind three times on how they were going to pay it. The Board of Selectment still needs to authorize the treasurer to set up a revolving account so that when the check comes from the state, it goes into the revolving account and then she can pay it out. And that's the plan as of this week. You authorize the treasurer to set up that account. I get the first check from Invest New Hampshire. And it's already made out to RPC. And then it's a case of we set up an account for nothing. But better to have it in place than not because we're still looking at roughly a 60-day turnaround time. And while I'm up here, I want to remind everybody that the JCLM, the Joint Loss Management Committee, is meeting Thursday at 5:00 here. One of you should be there.
So did I hear somebody making a motion for the treasurer to set up a revolving fund? For, and.
So I didn't see it on the.
I don't think we're at that point yet.
I don't think, yeah, I was going to say, I didn't see it.
Yeah, they need to set up the revolving. So when I get the first check.
When do you expect the first check?
I'm hoping next month.
Okay, so we'll have it ready for the 18th. That way they will know what the fund, what you want to call this fund. Get the paperwork signed up. All right, so that'll be on the 18th. 18th, yeah.
So you agree with that?
Yeah, I can.
No, not you. The money manager. Thank you. All right, so moving on, Constellation New Energy update.
So I've talked with our representative, Constellation Energy. I got some data back from them. Full disclosure, Constellation Energy is a supplier. I'm an energy, I'm a broker, which means I work with all suppliers. The information that I'm getting from Constellation is in line with some of the other data that I see. The energy market has changed dramatically in the last three to four months. A lot of it is international-based on conditions between Ukraine and Russia going on. There's a lot going on as a supply chain because of that. The US storage was well below a five-year average, right? So when you think of storage, storage is all the stuff that you need during the winter and summer months when everybody's withdrawing all this stuff because our pipeline that comes in New England is not big enough. Everything that I'm seeing, I think it makes sense for us to turn around and to finish what we started with Constellation, so that's the next hedge and clear out. That's the information, everything, all the information I'm seeing is that it's a smart move to do that. So my recommendation to the board, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, is that we, along with the others within this aggregation, move forward and go to the next hedge.
Mr. Chairman, just for the public's information, Newton is part of an aggregation, including the town of Hampton Falls, Stratum, Hampton Falls Library, Kingston and Kingston Library. The first five, we're five months into a three-year agreement right now. But the first year, the rates weren't that favorable. So they decided as an aggregate to lock in for 100% of the first year, but only 50% of years two and three to keep the option open should the rates become favorable again. And so we didn't lock anything for the non-winter months. And what they're doing now is they want to prepare the contracts and have the towns ready to go on almost a moment's notice. I probably have to drive over there and execute the documents so we can lock in the rates.
Yes, the gentleman, when he was here, he did say that everybody would have to have him sign that same exact day by a certain time, like 5:00 that night, in order for him to be.
Before that. So suppliers need to have it locked in. We as a town, you know, I was going to say, you're probably going to get the 3:00 notice. And you will, you do not need to drive as long as you're, we know when it's coming. You should be able to electronically sign those.
Yeah, I did, I did it last time electronically. You just have to keep an eye on your email that day, you know.
And the other thing is, is part of this, just to make sure, so everybody's seen gasoline come down, natural gas come down, right? That's all the stuff in this year. Everything that you see is happening this year. The outer years are coming down, but not in the same rate. Because the speculation is what goes down and has come down is going to go back up. There's a lot of unknowns in the market. So those outer years mean you're in 2013, but 2023, sorry, my son's here, 2024, 2025, and 2026 have come down, but it's still remaining high. The projection is that energy rates are going to stay high because the current administration also has some of this where they're shutting more coal down. They're shutting things down and relying on, let's call it, alternative energy. And that's not ramping up as quick as people wanted to. So there's a cost associated with that. Natural gas in New England is going to be the offsetter of everything you see shutting in. And so supply and demand, right? If they know that and 60% of what comes into for electrons on this grid is natural gas, supply and demand, they know we have a thirst for it, we need it, and costs. The international market right now has come down, but it still remains high. And God forbid there's a hiccup over the pond. Another country does something stupid. China decides they want more and there's a thirst for China to come into it. And they start drawing even more and they outbid the international market. The US market will start to rise dramatically. There's just a lot of stuff that I don't think our town can absorb, so it's also an insurance package. We take risk off the table. My suggestion is, again, that we move forward in this and that's where I'll leave things for now.
What's the penalty if we opt out?
It's called liquidated damages. It's called liquidated damages.
No, no, no. What's the dollar amount penalty? If a year into this, we decide we're done? What's that?
What's the market doing? So it's market-based, it's called liquidated damages. And what you do is you have to take what you've contractually agreed to at market rate, sell it back in.
Okay, so it's not a set? Okay.
Yeah, this is not a, hey, we agreed to this upfront, here's the penalties to go out. You're, it's like stock. Where was the stock when you bought it? Where is it when you sell it? If for some reason in a year from now, we buy here and the market is way up here, you're selling into a higher market, which doesn't make any sense, right? Because you want it higher. I would be the one that went back to any supplier and say, really, you're going to charge us? There should be no liquidated damages. I know this industry well enough. But I would never do that to the town because it makes no sense to give up cheap energy.
Okay. I was just interested to see what it was.
It's when it's the other way around and you're caught with a high contract and you're trying to get rid of it.
What the difference?
Because they're on the hook, they've hedged it, right? The other thing is that I made sure, and I've had this document that I think Diane has this, is that in the, if we as a town decide, look, markets are up high. We've locked in for the next two years. And all of a sudden, the market starts tanking, right? And we watch it and we say, okay, now what we want to do is blend and extend. Take that contract, take the liquidated damages, blend it into a new contract and go further out into the future. You take your high cost with your low cost, you blend down. So you get some, not 100% to where the market is.
I get it.
But you're taking relief. So we have that in writing, that we have that valve to pull.
Good.
All right, what I'm getting out of this is you're talking about a multi-year contract, correct?
Correct.
There's an escape clause in that contract, right?
There is no escape clause.
There has to be an escape.
It's a liquidated damages clause.
No, my point is, is the municipalities cannot enter into a multi-year contract without approval of the people. This is called sambranization. Named after the school district that did this. So in order to do a multiple contract.
Just to, I don't mean to cut you off, but so when, when did we do this? Eight months ago? A year ago?
Five months.
Five months, okay. So we did, we can get another opinion from council, but council told us that we could move forward like this. I know what you're quoting is correct, so.
Just making sure there's an escape clause.
It's worth asking one more time, you know, so.
All right, that's all.
Makes sense, thank you.
So I've been through this before as well, when I was on the school board. And our council at the time worded it this way. It's not, they voted for the budget. So if the money was in there for the budget for this multi-year contract, that's part of it. We're in a default, I get it, I'm just putting that out there. That is the way that they worded it, was they voted for the budget. Our budget didn't pass, but they voted for the budget. The multi-year contract was in there for that budget. It's passed, you know what I mean? And that's the way our council put it to us.
And, you know, to be fair, Lisa has educated us on this before in the past. So this is always in my mind anytime one of these comes up. When I saw you going to the microphone, I'm like, I bet you anything she's about to talk about sambranization. Absolutely, yeah.
So Jill, so RPC, Jill.
Longville.
Longville is on, has her hand up. And I believe she's the one that heads this aggregate. So would you like her to listen to her? Is that a yes? Okay, Jill, please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi. Just wanted to address the resident who just stood up. There is a non-appropriations clause in your contract. So if the town were not to appropriate money for electricity, you would not be tied to that contract.
Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Hi, Jill.
Hello, thank you.
Any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move that the town enter into an agreement with Constellation New Energy, Inc. to procure the remaining electricity supply for their current three-year contract and to authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. Any other discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. Funds to the library.
We received a letter from Kathy Muzerf, the trustee, whose assignment is treasurer, asking that the town cut the library a check for $29,925 for the appropriation of operating expenses at the Gale Library. I believe the board has to approve that. Or does it just go on the manifest?
No, it's just, yeah, it's just going to go, this is just to let you know that they requested this fund and that it will be on the next manifest.
So you'll see a spike in the amount.
So no further action.
FYI only.
All right. All right, intent to cut, tax map 9-6-18, New Hampshire fishing game. This is the one from, um, over there off of, um.
So I think it is, and I'm looking at Diane here. It's worth, it's worth it since we have some new people to talk about what these things mean. Because as we were educated about a year ago, we're, we actually are not approving anything, right? And Diane, fill in the blanks here if I'm getting something wrong. But so, because we've, we've had members of the board before vote no on these intents to cut, which is your right to vote no, but it's, we're actually.
Binding.
It's a non-binding thing that we're doing because it's notice, basically, I guess is the best way to say it. So they're providing notice, we're voting on whether to accept the notice. And if, we've had these things before where we've had, you know, people wanted more information on the board or something like that, and we didn't sign it, and then we.
You got in big trouble.
Endured the wrath of the state agency that, so it's.
Correct, this is the one off of Gale Village Road that we've already had one that we signed for, that they're doing a clearing and harvesting some of the trees that they have every right to do. And like I said, in it, it's from New Hampshire fishing game land that they're doing. So as Wood said, it's simply out of our hands. The state makes sure that all the appropriate paperwork is done. I believe we do receive partial payment, right, for the lumber being cut and it going over our roads or whatever it is.
I'm not sure if you'll get timber tax on this because it's state property, but you will?
Yep.
I'm not sure, if it was private property, I could say, I would say, yes, you will. But we're at state land, I'm not sure.
Do we have any liability in terms of the road? Or do they have any liability in terms of the damage to the roads?
Our road agent, Mike Povero, took pictures of the road prior to them going in and doing the cut so that he could have documentation. Yeah, the condition of the road and that if it gets abused and destroyed from all that, the heavy truck can come in, in and out, especially once it's loaded with that lumber, that we would be looking to get.
Restitution.
Yeah. To take care of the road and fix it. So that's another FYI, just out there to let us know that that's there.
So if you guys are good, I'm gonna move to sign the intent to cut for tax map 9-6-18.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right. Property tax abatements. This is for tax map 99-3-1, then 99-2-2, then 99-2-3, and 99-2-4.
If you guys want me to, I'll run through these. So I would, I would move to sign abatement for tax map 99-3-1 in the amount of $4.00 to EverSource Energy as recommended by the tax assessor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Conley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just so you know, it's not the tax assessor, it's just the assessor.
The assessor, sorry. There's probably a reason why you didn't write tax assessor next to assessor.
Yeah, just assessor.
I was, I was going.
That was unanimous.
I was freestyling, I was making up my own motions. I would move to sign abatement for tax map 99-2-2 in the amount of $2.00 to Hudson Light and Power as recommended by the assessor.
Second.
Seconded by Joe Simone. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I would move to sign abatement for tax map 99-2-3 in the amount of $35.00 to Mass Municipal Wholesale as recommended by the assessor.
Second.
Seconded by Joe Simone. Any discussion? There being none, all, all in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
And I would move to sign abatement for tax map 99-2-4 in the amount of $2.00 to Taunton Municipal Light Company as recommended by the assessor.
Second.
Seconded by Joe Simone. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Takes care of the tax abatements. Other business manifest?
Anybody want to do them, or I can do them? The, so I would move to sign vendor manifest dated March 27, 2023 in the amount of $811,000. of which $755,030.00 goes towards the April 2023 Sanborn Regional School District payment.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would next move to sign cable revolving fund dated March 27, 2023 in the amount of $4,778.00.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Simone. All those in favor?
Aye.
I would move to sign Uniform Fire Watch Revolving Fund dated March 27, 2023 in the amount of $110.00.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Simone. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous again.
Move to sign payroll manifest for pay period March 12 through the 25, 2023, with a pay date of March 30, 2023. Total payroll is $58,382.68, which includes $560.57 of ARPA administrative costs.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Simone. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. All right, veterans' tax credit.
I can move, if you like, I can move to sign veterans' tax credit for tax map 16-5-22-1, beginning tax year 2023.
Second.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Joe seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
Can next move to sign veterans' tax credit for tax map 8-2-15-2, beginning tax year 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign veterans' tax credit for tax map 17-3-5, beginning tax year 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign veterans' tax credit for tax map 17-2-7, beginning tax year 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Those were all unanimous. Requisitions. Anybody want to give Matt a break?
I will. Ready? Move to sign fire department requisition 1059 FD in the amount, in the amount of $2,878.36 for VFW radio from Belltronic. Funds to come from the 2023 Fire Department Budget Line Item Number 4220312.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Additionally, move to sign fire department requisition 1060 FD in the amount, in the amount of $1,848 for a new bell for engine number two from Fire Medic Funds to come from the 2023 Fire Department Budget Line Item Number 422033, oh, excuse me, 4220303.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. All in favor?
Aye.
Additionally, move to sign fire department requisition 1061 FD in the amount of $3,605.00 for the fire protection clothing from Fire Medic. Funds to come from the 2023 Fire Department Budget Line Item Number 4220309.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. All in favor?
Aye.
And last move to sign requisition ARPA-2023-005 for waste oil heater installation provided by Arrow Equipment, incorporate the amount of $2,000.00.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. Any, any questions about that? Anybody want to?
I can explain if you want.
Yeah, I'd like to.
If you would, Trish, just so everybody to refresh their memories because we've already talked about this.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So on December 19, the waste, waste oil heater that we purchased, we were, we got a quote of $13,500. And immediately when we got that, because we were all working so great back then, I immediately sent it to Kim, who immediately sent it to Diane. And then Mike Pevero called me and he said, don't send that yet. He forgot to include the installation. So there was a $2,000 installation. I said, okay, too late, but send it over to me anyway, and I'll send it to Kim. I sent it to Kim, and somehow, in the mix-up, the new quote that had that extra $2,000 for installation on it never made it to the Board of Selectmen to approve. So on December 19, you approved $13,500. And this $2,000, although ARPA approved it, you never got to approve it because that invoice didn't show up. So realizing that, and I talked to the company today, who thought, of course, they should have had their money by now, this was back in December, that I was going to propose it to you for approval so that they could get that last $2,000. So it was a little hiccup. We recovered, the people said that's fine, and that's why it's a completely separate requisition. And I tried to reference that first requisition from December 19.
Thank you, Trish.
And after you sign it, can I request, so that Robin knows, I always want a signed copy of any ARPA requisitions I have to send in with my annual report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. All right, any other further discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those were all unanimous. We have appointments. Go ahead, Joe, you're on a roll.
Okay, appointments. Move to appoint Amanda Aiello as a deputy treasurer with the term to expire March 31, 2024.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. Congratulations to Ms. Aiello.
Move to sign letter authorizing Amanda Aiello as an authorized signee for the town held accounts at the North Shore Bank as determined by the treasurer.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
Sweetie, is that letter ready to be signed?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to have it this evening so I can get it back.
Oh, you would, would you? Well, stick around right after the meeting.
And next move to appoint Diane Moran and Christine Trzeminski to the Cable Committee with the term to expire April 30, 2026.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. Who's this Diane Moran?
We need to discuss this.
I don't know.
See, she's not going away.
All right, so we got a seconded by Mr. Guide. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
And that would be unanimous. All right, we gotta move on, do, 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 for minutes. Go ahead, Joe.
Move to accept the non-public and public meeting minutes dated March 21, 2023 as written.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
So.